From the top. Hello there. My name is Elizabeth Cox. I'm starting over. I am standing in for Bill Maratschek, who's the Personnel Board Chair. Bill is out of town, and this is my first time to present, so I beg your patience. So, Article 4 is the first article up this evening on classifications. And the objective here is to ratify the Personnel Board classification actions that have taken place over the course of the year. And the classification action, what is that? It's an amendment to the classification plan. It adds or deletes titles, assigns a title to a salary range, and reassigns a title from one salary range to another. So, the existence of the plan does not approve the financing for those positions, but the Personnel Board does get involved to look at the three bullets that are there to amend the plan for specific positions. All right? Okay, we're working now. Slide 3. Classification actions are necessary during the course of the year in order to create new positions that the town manager is seeking, the duties of existing positions that change during the course of the year, and position titles that need to be updated. Okay, so those things happen during the course of the year, not just once at town meeting, and that's where the Personnel Board works with the HR Department, the town manager, to make those actions go forward during the course of the year. Okay? Per the Personnel Bylaw, the Board, the Personnel Board, assigns these titles and salary ranges as needed, and the salary grade assignments are based on the town standardized system. So, there's a classification and compensation system that's in place, and that system is referred to in terms of changing any of the groupings or the particular salary grade assignments. These changes, as the Personnel Board determines, are, as I mentioned, worked with the HR Department and with the particular managers, as well as the town manager, to look at those newer changed positions that require such an amendment during the course of the year, and then are to be ratified at the next town meeting. So, there's a temporary change until they're ratified at a town meeting. All right, the actions that are subject to ratification this year, there've been five specified in the article, and they were taken, those actions were taken during the course of the year in time to get into the warrant. Any additional actions, there have been two so far, where two new titles have been added or have been reorganized. And all of these actions, all seven, will be taken before town meeting and will be filed with the town clerk's office. Right? Almost through this one. Actions here are taken for these reasons. They maintain the appropriate jobs, titles, and salary ranges, so that the town is able to attract and retain competent employees, and this is a very challenging post-COVID, as we all are aware, and to comply with the pay equity laws, and those are changing as well. Okay, so the town is keeping up with those changes. All right, and this is the last slide on Article 4. The request here is to anticipate a motion that the town take affirmative action on Article 4 as printed in the warrant.
Thanks very much. So, are there any questions from the Board about Article 4? Yes, Teri?
Hi, Liz. I would like to recommend, if you can go back to Slide 5, I think it is, right, instead of saying on that Slide 5 are in the warrant, and then there's two more, that you actually spell out what the seven changes are, because this would be clearer, I think. The five are in the warrant, but we'd have to find them, and they're on two different pages, and then you have two more that we don't see what they are. So, if you just say, "These are the changes," I think that would be clearer.
Okay.
The seven, these are the seven things we're changing.
Okay, so shall I change the slide and return them in?
That's my suggestion.
Okay.
For town meeting.
Yeah. For town meeting, of course. Okay.
Right. This is like a rehearsal for town meeting. So, I just think it would be clearer, because like those two new titles.
Yeah, definitely.
We don't know what they are, right?
Sure.
Okay, are there any other questions from the Board? All right, then we'll turn to the public. If you have a question or comment, please approach the microphone, or if you're on the Zoom, use the raised hand feature that is down at the bottom under Reactions. If you go to Reactions, you'll see there's a way that you can click on Raise Hand. So, I am not seeing any questions on this article. Okay, so now we'll move to the discussion of Articles 5 and 6.
Okay, thank you very much. I think the slides will be up in a sec.
Yeah.
And this is unusual, so I'll just preface that, if that's all right, that Articles 5 and 6 are going to be presented tonight jointly, and I'll get into the details of why that is so. It's looking at the Classification and Compensation Study and Plan for the Town, and there are some logistical issues there. So, we have two that we'd like to clarify together. I'll just wait for the slides.
Sure.
There we are. Great. All right, and again, Articles 5 and 6 are drafted in the warrant, but the purpose here is to implement, the purpose of the Articles Classification and Compensation Plan is that we would update the plan for non-union regular-status-town positions that would be effective in July. Okay, so there's two options, and that's why we're taking the two articles together this evening. Article 5 would adopt a new plan that comes from a Classification and Compensation Study that is nearly complete. Article 6 would amend the existing plan, so please think of it as our safety. We hope to go forward with Article 5, but we're waiting on specific details to ensure that we have full confidence from employees, from the town, from the Personnel Board, and town governance, to have confidence to go forward with the new Compensation and Classification Study. Okay? So, this evening, what I want to clarify is that only one of these articles would go forward, and so we're looking at them together. All right, so the outline of the presentation is to clarify the concepts behind Articles 5 and 6, and give an update on the status of the new Classification and Compensation Study that's critical to Article 5. Right? And then to give some details on what we hope will be the path to town meeting, to include the specific recommendations. And so, this is quite unusual, I'm sure, but it's, hopefully, we'll give you more information this evening, and I'll help you understand where things are. All right, one clarification is to be very clear that what isn't covered in either article is how much money would be spent on salaries. Right? That's not within the purview of the Personnel Board. What we look at is what's subject to approval on job titles, groupings, grades of positions, and salary ranges. Right? Does that make sense? All right, now, and our objective is that a new Classification and Compensation Plan would come forward, and that it would have the four components listed here: external competitiveness of salaries, internal equity, cost of living adjustments, and comparability with salaries of unionized employees. Right? The Article 5, the proposed new plan, is still under review, and there's where our request for this evening is to continue to March 27th. The date might fluctuate there, but at which time there would be another public hearing, and we'd bring further details forward. Right? So, this is just a quick slide on the background on Classification and Compensation Studies. The last one that the town organized was done in 2008, so quite some time ago. If you think back, what were you doing in 2008? But that plan has worked well for the town from 2000 to 2022. In the middle there, of course, 20 to 21, it would have been terrific to go forward with the plan, but the pandemic was really a showstopper there. It was very difficult. People were working from home. How were we going to organize such a study and do all the comparisons that are required, all the in-person meetings, which make these things more effective, was very difficult to do? So, the decision was taken to hold off on that study. And by 22 August, the last August, the town secured a consultancy called GovHR, and they had started, they started in August to do an analysis of the job duties, market data for non-unionized, regular-status benchmark positions. Not all positions, but very important number of positions that they benchmarked. Okay? All right, so there are two components, as you can see from the title. There's a classification and a compensation part of the study. The classification system looks at job evaluations, and that was a really in-depth series of discussions for internal equity. So, employees of the town were organized and supported the study, putting in information, supervisors, department chairs, and so on, were very active in looking at the job evaluations. What are the jobs? What kinds of duties? Have they shifted over time? And that kind of information was really important to understand, so that the job evaluations could be clarified. The compensation, Part 2, is a salary survey, and that really looks at external competitiveness and benchmarking major positions in comparable communities. And it was quite an extensive comparison across many towns in Massachusetts, which I can show you later if we have time. So, Part 1, the job evaluation. This really is looking at internal equity and how positions thus. So, the job evaluation looks at those positions, not the individuals in the positions, but what are the positions, what's the scope of work, and so on. The information was gathered, as I mentioned, with employees and supervisors, questionnaires that are on hand, and have been reviewed and gone, there's been back and forth with GovHR, the HR Department, supervisors, department chairs, and so on. And 185 positions were reviewed using nine job factors, and we'll get into these factors unless we have time to do so at the end. Okay? Now, on the compensation, the salary survey, that's where we're looking at external competitiveness, and the data was collected with many comparable communities. This is tricky in some circumstances, given that not all communities around, for example, have a light plant, and so on. So, there's some really important work to analyze and be careful about how those external competitiveness looks across different communities. All right, and the current circumstances. Here we are this evening, at the end of February. Employees last week had been presented with GovHR's proposed new classification and compensation plan, titles, grades, and pay ranges, and they have some time to get back, to review how it impacts them, and to go through a reconsideration process if they have any questions at all. So, it can be something that really says, "I don't think I was in the right grade area," or it can be, "I don't understand this particular piece of information. I need more clarity there." By March 22nd, GovHR is to provide the final recommendations on the plan. So, that's based on the study, and now is going to be ready for a plan, and thus, we're in a temporary situation this evening. The Personnel Board expects to present more details at the next public hearing. I think I mentioned earlier, maybe it's March 27th. It might have fluctuated, but.
We will, we'll need to set a time certain tonight.
Terrific. We'll be holding everyone accountable for these deadlines, and hopefully come back to as much information as we can, and a final recommendation. All right, so the next step is, the Personnel Board is to decide whether to move forward with Article 5 or Article 6, which is an amendment to the existing plan, Article 6. And the note there at the bottom is important. The class and comp structure would then move to town meeting, even if there are some individual positions that are continued to be evaluated, so questions, clarity required. But if there's been a determination that the study itself is solid, works well, and the question and answer period for employees has not unearthed some major problems with the plan, that's the expectation. And then in the paren there at the bottom, of course, as I just reviewed in Article 4, the Personnel Bylaw says that there are some changes that can be made throughout the year as temporary changes that would come back to town meeting next year, and that would happen every year. That's normally what happens. There's an Article 4. It's usually Article 4, I think. Okay, so, not one, but one, not two of the articles would go forward. It would establish salary ranges and not actual salary increases. That is not under the purview of the Personnel Board. Okay? And there's more information about the study itself, where you can find on the webpage for the Personnel Board, and I believe that that is confirmed now. It's up. The information is up. The Finance Committee report that will be posted for the town meeting on the town meeting webpage will also have more information about the new Classification and Compensation Plan, and we request to come back to a public hearing. Again, we here have the date, but we're flexible and take the guidance of the Select Board on that.
Okay, so, I think that we will be continuing the hearing at the end of the deliberations this evening, until the March 27th date at 7:00 PM, to be able to hear these articles in full at that time, so that we'll wait until the end of the hearing to make that motion, because meanwhile, the public hearing continues. Also, I would propose that we maybe, I mean, there may be some clarifying questions about the process, but in terms of the substance of the classification actions and plan, that we perhaps either address those offline or at the subsequent hearing date, when people have the opportunity to actually review the work. And so.
Yeah, so notwithstanding that there's a lot more information to come forward, and we'll have another opportunity to discuss this, I would just, and perhaps this is already in your thinking, but whether it's Article 5 or Article 6, I think, given the breadth of this project, it might be helpful to already, if you're not already thinking of a FAQ, with anticipating a lot of questions and with some responses, so that you have details there. And I'll just give you an example, even though this may change. Under Articles 5 and 6, on Slide 8, where you talk about data collected from comparable communities, and then the second bullet there talks about salary range proposals based on the 85th percentile. Those would be two examples of where FAQ, if not, you know, would be helpful, even if some of that information is also captured on the slide. So, that's just an example.
Okay, any other questions from the Board?
Linda, do you mean like a handout FAQ or in the FinCom report, or what?
Well, certainly something that could be posted on the website ahead of time, but also most likely a handout.
Yeah, tell me. Okay, any other questions or comments from the Board? All right, then, moving to the public.
Ellen Quackenham, 206 Prairie Street. I noted that you said, Liz, that you were looking at comparable communities, like those that had light boards and probably broadband. I wondered if you are including market rate positions. Like, I know we've lost people based on their going to the public sector, and I guess I would encourage you to wonder if GovHR includes that as well, because in some cases, just looking at the community might underpay public employees and have to be a problem in recruitment and retention.
I, my understanding is that they haven't done that at this point, and it might be challenging to get them to do that at this, at this point in the study, but we'll certainly bring that up and see what we can do. I've also put up here Slide 17, which is a backup to show you which communities have been in the study as the comparable communities. But I think that this kind of detail or questioning which communities might not have been or should be in there might be something that you want to defer till we have more details.
Or feel free, of course, to contact Personnel Board in the interim between now and March.
Like, Westfield's is well-known for having broadband.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so there are questions to the public?
Dean Beatty, 73 Walden Terrace. If you could just show a slide, I think it's Slide 5, maybe Slide 4. You had four characteristics that were, that were driving the study, and three out of those four felt to me, yeah, there you go, four, external competitiveness, cost of living adjustments, and comparability of salaries to unionized employees. All three of those, three of those four things, feel to me like they are providing upward pressure on the salary ranges. Is there any sense that you are going to, even though the Personnel Board does not set salaries, going to drive people into new groups, into upward mobility, so to speak, and that's going to put pressure on the town's budget? This is a good question.
Yeah. I can only answer that logistically, and it sounds reasonable that that pressure should be part of the discussion. The challenge here is through the COVID, the whole pandemic period, there have been a lot of empty positions in the town, and it's been very challenging to find people to fill the positions. So, there's that tension that would also move in the direction that you're indicating, moving people to look at, you know, higher salaries when they're difficult to put people in place. And external competitiveness, internal equity, cost of living, all of those things are looking at 2023 and 2024 and moving forward. So, we're not, you know, we're not, we're not trying to peg earlier in time either, you know, so these are, you know, a cost of living adjustment is what it says. It is going to look at where are we now, and we all know that it's been a challenging year. So, quite well taken, but I'm not sure that the Classification and Compensation Study, unless, maybe I could pose a question to you, are there other factors that you think should be in there to anchor things in a stronger way for the town?
It was my intent to get into a colloquy here, but my point really is that the Personnel Board is justifiably, aside from individual views and salary recommendations that the town manager ultimately approves, but when the entire framework is going to show this kind of upward pressure through a completely new program, it is likely that individual employees, with having done very little to, you know, more, I'm not saying that they're not doing their job, but they will all rise up due to these various factors. Some of them will just move up. So, I'm just saying that the implementation of the plan has the potential of just, in effect, causing the town to spend more on personnel by its very implementation, even though the Personnel Board stands aside from salary review and salary, you know, salary. So, that's my only point.
Right, but I think it's an important dialogue to have here, is that what we're looking at and what the GovHR has done is they've looked at salary ranges, right? And when we have more information, I think we'll have much more clarity on, does that mean the ranges all moved over quite a bit, or they didn't? And I don't have that detail for you, so I can't fully, with confidence, tell you that we haven't changed, you know, the world here, that it's, you know, within a reasonable, but I think that the number of communities that have been also reviewed is helpful to understand that it's not, you know, we're not looking at an explosion here. But I don't have enough detail to give you anymore on that front at this point.
All right, any other questions from the public? Again, on Zoom, if you want to make a comment or have a question, you can use the raise hand feature. I am not seeing anyone, so, to be continued, literally and figuratively. So, now we'll move to a citizen petition article, Article 10, about a DEI director.
Hello, everybody. I'm Josh Lee. I'm co-chair of the Concord DEI Commission, along with.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rose Felix-Frassie, and I'm. Josh.
And our fellow commission member is also joining us here tonight.
Joe Palmbaugh, commission member.
It's Joe. And then we also have almost the rest of the Commission here. If anyone could just raise their hand, say, "Commissioner member, thank you for coming, everybody." You know, I'm glad, Liz, you were talking about pay bands and talented employees, because that's exactly what we're here to talk about tonight. Let me start by, you know, who the Commission is. For those of you who don't know about our work, we're relatively new commission, a little over two years old. We exist to basically help Concord be a more welcoming place for residents, for employees, for people who work here, for people who visit here. That's our, that's our charter from the Select Board. And this petition, next slide, is a logical building block on the work that the Commission's been doing, that the town has been doing, that many other citizen groups in the town have been doing, and it's consistent with our charter overall. And the petition is, as you can read, you know, really asking the town to ask the Board and the town manager to expedite the hiring of a full-time Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I will, you know, share with you all the background on that. We've done extensive work in the town, research on other towns, other best practices. We've thought through specific roles that the position would play, and we feel pretty unanimously and pretty strongly that it's going to be hard to accelerate DEI in the town without this crucial position. Next slide, please. So, let me just talk a little bit about the current state. Other than Joe, I'm actually the newest member of the Commission. I was asked by some friends to join at my professional work. I actually work in the healthcare industry and do a lot of work in health equity, which is a burning issue in our country right now. And when I was first asked to join, I was a little skeptical. I've lived here for 20 years as a white male. It seemed like this was a pretty liberal, tolerant, welcoming place, and I wasn't really sure what we were going to find, but I'm trying to be a good friend, and I joined, and I liked my fellow commission members. And I believe firmly in this first piece that, you know, discrimination and bias are a real reality in this town. As a straight white man, I was blind to it, but I've been personally horrified by the stories and the experiences that we hear about every week, sometimes every day on the Commission. We are trying to be scientific and systematic about it, and my friend Andrea has done an amazing job fielding a DEI survey with the help of the town that now has 350 responses, and so we'll actually have real data by the time of town meeting to quantify the extent of the incidents. But, you know, one story that just really moved me to the core was a white mom in town who's married to a black man, has young kids in town. They were out, the mom was out on the bike path, and her kids were biking ahead of. out on the bike path, uh, and her kids were biking ahead of her. And a white couple kind of passed the kids and came up to her and said, watch out up there, there's a gang. And this is the woman's own kids. Um, I realize that's one data point, but all of us, uh, many of my fellow commission members have experienced incidents personally, uh, and people come to us. Um, so we believe strongly that, that it's a reality in Concord as, as much as maybe some of us don't, don't see it uh, as much, as much as others. Now, the, the government, the town and the citizens of Concord are, are doing stuff. So we launched this commission. Uh, League of Women Voters has taken incredible leadership around this and had a very impactful uh, series on, on DI earlier in the year that was amazingly eye-opening, tying all the way back to the deep uh, roots of racism uh, in, in Concord. Uh, I, it was highly educational, I think, changed many people's uh, self, uh, self-understanding about the town. The, the surveys in the field, uh, we had a wonderful community coffee with the Concord Police Department to talk about recent incidents, fifty, over fifty residents attended in the middle of the day. Um, there have been assessments conducted uh, in the town workforce and more ongoing, and, and as you heard before, there's a DI consultant who's now in place. So there is, actions are being taken. However, uh, from everything that the commission's assessed, the magnitude of the change that's required is pretty significant, and we find it almost hard to imagine how all the work that we've envisioned getting done, and that other towns who've taken this seriously are doing, can happen without a full-time dedicated staff person uh, in the townhouse working on this. Um, and, and this is, and we'll get into this in more detail. Um, this is stuff like a really detailed roadmap of training, assessments, data gathering, um, incident reporting, uh, specific task forces on things that are so critical to DI like affordable housing, um, cultural events, uh, uh, local business outreach, worker outreach. There's a lot to get done once you really roll up your sleeves and start thinking about what has to happen. Um, and uh, and we'll, we'll talk more about, you know, what the specifics of all that. Um, the next section's gonna get a little detailed, so I guess I'd like to invite my um, uh, co-commission members to say anything before we get into all that.
So we're really asking for um, this, this lens of DEI to be centered, prioritized and resourced. Uh, we need resources to be able to mobilize these efforts and to really address communities' evolving needs. Are the needs of our community is rapidly evolving day to day. There's so much that's on the forefront right now that we're navigating across generations, and so we're really urging and really hoping that the community can come together at this moment and to really prioritize uh, and resource these vast needs. Um, the, the, the day-to-day realities that we are learning about on the commission give, give us a lot of, a great sense of urgency, and so that urgency is what we really want to convey. We are mobilizing and doing everything we possibly can, um, but we really need to do more.
Uh, next slide, please. So again, just kind of, this is uh, you know, grounding this request, uh, you know, in, in, in what we think the select board and the town have already committed to. These are the, these are the goals uh, that, that were set as goals for the town, and we really think the director is just another uh, strong step forward in this. Uh, next one? Um, you know, we're a fortunate town. Um, and uh, we think diversity is a strength and, and consistent with the deep and longstanding values of this town. Um, changing this uh, is going to um, not just be superficial and performative. It's actually about changing systems, thinking about our workforce, thinking about our, our education institutions, our public safety institutions, our economy, our business, the healthcare institutions. Uh, so it's not, it's not just an easy fix, you know, putting up a sign on the door, and that's why, you know, dedicated leadership and, and staff is, is called for. Um, and uh, one person's not gonna be able to do it alone. So even if we successfully do get a fantastic person in staff, it still needs to be something that we, the citizens of Concord, really make happen in the end. But we think having a dedicated person will, will really accelerate it. Uh, next one, please. Um, we uh, have to have uh, done a lot of research on other towns, not just in Massachusetts. Actually, this is a kind of a New England issue. Uh, other states are, are doing really interesting things, but there are twenty towns that I think we would consider our peers who have full-time dedicated uh, DI directors. Um, I think we actually brought some copies. Uh, our neighbor, the town of Acton, actually conducted a highly detailed like twenty-five-page study just on the job role and benchmarks. They, they mentioned that it would be a, a job grade seventeen position. I don't know what that means, but if that helps anybody who's kind of thinking, but, but you probably know, Liz. Um, uh, um, it's, it's, it's quite thorough and breaks down exactly what, what this role would be. We see uh, the position um, reporting to the, to the town manager. Um, and the town of Belmont, which has been doing tremendous leadership in DI, is, is in the awesome process of I hiring a full-time DI director. So we gotta move fast uh, to get, to get a good person. Next one. Um, I, I think I've, I've, I've more or less covered this, but uh, the director has some specific uh, roles they do, but they're really kind of like an orchestra conductor. Um, being a liaison to all these different uh, systems in town, uh, certainly being a liaison to this DEI commission uh, to help implement. Uh, we put together an eight-point plan earlier in December, if anyone's seen it. We would really need help from a dedicated person to help implement all the, all the uh, components of that which are, which are mentioned here. Uh, next one. And here's even more detail uh, about, about what the role would, would entail. Um, you know, integrating uh, townwide goals, uh, being a staff liaison, uh, helping to make sure that uh, audits are conducted and training programs are run. Um, being kind of a, a clearinghouse for town-wide uh, cultural events. Um, and uh, very importantly, helping to stand up an incident uh, and reporting an investigation system so that the town really builds up trust and, and can communicate that we're uh, pursuing DEI in a transparent way. Next one? Joe, I'm gonna cold call on you, uh, cause you were so eloquent and, and, and helping explain why that's moving us now.
Right. Thanks. It just seems like a summary conclusion that uh, although the work is important, it's not something really that it can, uh, as dedicated as our town committees are, not a committee of volunteers of nine can make all these things happen. Really is gonna take some staff support. So as you've tasked us to, when Josh mentioned your initial goals, your initial goal was really to ask us to give you what specs, practices going on in other communities. So that's what we've hoped we're trying to do through this warrant to give you from our work and research, what really is best practices in other towns. And that's why we would say, well, now's the time um, to, to, to move on this, because we know it takes time for you to, to, to study this and um, actually actualize it. Um, but what we're asking for the select board is to support the expedited hiring of a DEI director at the town meeting, or, or through this article, the town meeting, and there's already been a consultant hired um, by the town to task that consultant in her work uh, to work with us, the DEI commission and the, and town staff to put together what needs to happen um, to make this position a valuable one so that citizens feel like we're investing in something that's of value. You know, Josh mentioned the town of Acton did a very extensive study to put the position together. We're lucky that the town's been proactive to hire a good consultant. We've had a chance to meet with her in the next few, last few days. She seems solid uh, and, and understands the work. Could really help us get this work done. So we're hoping that you will task this consultant already hired to work with us, the DI commission, to determine the goals, scope, work and needs of the community. And then finally, uh, just to support other forums over the next year to make sure that other citizens have opportunities to discuss and think about this with us. Um, turn to the slide?
No, that's okay.
So what we would really, uh, uh, welcome now is really concrete and helpful probing questions, both from the select board and then from the public at large.
Okay, so uh, questions from the board? Yes, Terry.
Uh, thank you for your presentation and all of your work. Um, I just have a couple of comments um, for the town meeting presentation. Uh, there were two slides that have a lot of detail, and we can't read them. So I suggest that you, yeah, that's one of them, that you make them into handouts or maybe make them into several slides, but that uh, goes into my other comment that you, I think, would have to work with the moderator because there will be a very short time limit. Um, I think this presentation was maybe ten, fifteen minutes, and I know you're gonna have less time than that, but um, the moderator will decide. So there's got to be some way to um, tighten it up, I guess, a little bit, but thank you very much for your work.
Other questions or comments from the board? Okay, um, I, I, or Lyndon, did you have something?
No, I, I, you know, I thank you for all your work. Um, and I would, I would just echo Terry's comments. Yeah.
Okay, um, I had a couple of questions. So one is on uh, slide six. You cite the other towns in Massachusetts that have DI's directors. Um, are all of those towns larger than Concord in population?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
It'd be, it'd be good to see examples, because I, all the ones that I see on that list look bigger.
Right.
Um, and then that brings up another question or, or possibility in my mind, which is, you know, when, for example, for affordable housing, we have uh, pursued a strategy of regionalization. So we have a regional affordable housing office, and the benefits of that are not only to, of course, share the cost, but to, secondly, get true best practices, uh, regionalized best practices, and secondly, to have uh, staff, because it's not just simply the director. The director has, you know, some special skills, but then there are other sort of uh, actuarial skills and other, you know, kinds of details that you would have difficulty finding in one individual, and it's certainly not the case that Concord uniquely has this problem. It, it, it is certainly not only, you know, a, a local problem, but almost, you know, a national problem. Uh, it's so, uh, and not that I'm saying we regionalize on a national level, but that perhaps there is some model that could work um, and that could grow over time, because I, I do believe that the regional housing services offices has proven to be a, a very effective means of going after this. Now, there also are downsides because you don't, you don't get the exclusive focus on Concord, and I realize that, that, that's also, there's an element to that. Um, other, I, I think we're maybe done with questions from the board. So now we'll move to the questions from the public. Uh, please identify your name and address.
Yes, and we will, uh, fifty, it's just a wording question. The more, uh, the article says to expedite the hiring, but that implies there is already a position and the town just needs to be faster hiring, or are you asking to create a position? That if so, that should be clearer in the whole thing, because the article doesn't ask for creation of a position.
Hmm, that's a good point.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's a, it's about creating a position.
Rob Nelson thirty Jenny Gibb in Rome. Could we go to slide three for a moment?
Aye.
You say appear that you've had persistent and numerous complaints from members of the Concord community about incidents of overt or implicit bias. Considering the fact that you are asking the town of Concord's taxpayers to fund this program after a recent increase in our taxes over the middle, middle school, before town meeting, will you present to the town, to town meeting, a law of the individuals by name, date, verifiable incident that you state creates a need for the warrant you currently have pending? Uh, you have a list?
I think that's a legal question. I don't really, it's, we have a great answer. Thank you. Nowhere.
Part of the reason, part of the reason uh, for the request of a, of a position is to create an internal uh, system. Town has no internal system, so there is no internal tracking system. Uh, many of these other towns have exactly that. That's what we're, we're talking about, to create a system so that we could answer that question in a more significant way. What we're doing now is dealing with anecdotal evidence uh, and, and lived experience of people in this room who have lived this experience in the town. That's where, that's unfortunately, that's all we can correct, collect. However, this survey and the dot in the spirit of the informational column, the survey will be more specific. Okay, I think.
Hey, and you gave us sixty-two Prescott Road. I went to answer very well. Um, I am the.
You're, you're the physicianer.
I am the physicianer, and I want to explain first why I put the word expedite there, because at the time I raised this with the, also, you know, with some Geneva Women's Board members. Uh, I used the word expedite because I was under the impression that um, yeah, the town, the select board and the town manager were in fact in favor of eventually hiring a DEI director, but that just was not quite the time for financial reasons. That was my impression. I might be totally wrong, because the reason I did sponsor this article was a matter of equity. It was in order to give the, uh, the DEI commission a chance to be heard, a chance to express their concerns to the entire town about the urgency of the matter. Um, having been uh, born and raised as a silent minority member in my country of verse, I have first-person familiarity with DEI concerns. And um, relevant to the last comment, um, it is true that people who are being oppressed or harassed or, or persecuted, perhaps that's not have a that might be too strong for Concord or not. I don't know who has experienced what, where I came from, it would easily be persecuted. Um, people are afraid to speak up, and um, so uh, because of the um, this fragile nature of the issue in the first place, and equity being a matter in the first place, the whole point is to give this expenditure, this place in our society uh, an edge over all our other needs and concerns, or at least to somehow accommodate it, just, just because it starts from a more vulnerable position. Uh, thanks.
Dean Banfield seventy-three Walden Terrace. Um, I think the article sort of falls short of one of the critical aspects of getting this urgency implemented, and that is, there's no money on the table in the article. And the budget, as I've read it, has five new FTEs, and unless Carrie can tell me that one of those is allocated for a DEI position, and I didn't think that there was one, the budget doesn't have any room in it for this, for this thing. So what we may do is vote to expedite it, and then we will end up with it in the budget for next year. But that's sort of a, that seems to be where we are. It would, the way we did sustainability um, was we put that on the warrant and said, there's this much money to go hire a sustainability person, and that's how that got done quickly. And here we're gonna have a one-year delay, I believe, based on the way this is structured. Yes.
Hi, I'm Nancy Crusella, the one forty Walden Street. Um, I've told this story other places, and, and I do know this is going to, this is going to come up, but I'm going to tell it very briefly again. I have been mentoring a young woman from Haiti for a long time now. She's practically my daughter, and she lives in Waltham. And she told me once that, because I, I encouraged her to come and stay with me, and, and uh, we do a lot of things in Concord, but she made the comment to me once that she uh, feels safe in Concord. We do a lot of things in Concord, but she made the comment to me once that she feels safe in Concord, but she doesn't feel comfortable. She feels unsafe in Dorchester, but she feels comfortable there. And to me, that just says it all. She now, she, she got a college degree. And her major was criminal justice. She now works at the Concord prison. And she cannot afford to live here. She's actually taken that job. She moved back here. And then she's going to move back to Houston because she cannot afford to live here. And I too am going to vent about the middle school. The town voted for this very expensive middle school and. Nobody questions the need for a middle school, but all the, there are all these letters and comments in public and in the newspaper about how desperately we need it and how our children deserve this. Yes. We need a new middle school, but we didn't need such an expensive middle school. And. How are we going to afford something like this, this DEI position? To me. Money needs to be spent on real things, helping people like my friend. Be able to afford to live here, and she works in this town now, and to make her feel comfortable. You know, this is a very worthy idea, but I don't know if it's practical, you know. My two, my ears perked up and I heard that there was this incident on the river and I thought, well, that happens everywhere. What are you going to do about it? Yes, we want to address those things, but how is this going to help my friend? It's not really a practical thing that we can address. We have, it's a wider social issue in our country. And I'm not sure the DEI. Director is going to help that. So I think my. My reaction to this presentation is just that, in, in what I would like to hear more is more detail about, not just the lofty things that you're aiming for, but what. The job would practically entail, what that person would be doing on a day-to-day basis and what the. The goals would be and what the practical goals. That would help people to come to visit here, actually be able to live here and feel comfortable. We are not a diverse community. Thank you.
Kristen Haggerty ninety five Revolutionary Road. I'd like to thank the town, Ms. Galis, for putting together this petition and with the help of, or to support the. DEI commission. And I just wanted to make sure that. You, members of the select board, as the policymaking body in Concord who set the tone. For our town. Who have the ability with the finance committee, with all of the committees that you oversee and participate in. With the town manager. To lead. And show the town and the residents. What is valued? By putting things in the budget and by prioritizing things, by elevating. Certain positions, certain commissions, certain issues that need to be resolved. And even if they're hard to see, even if not every resident experiences them in the same way. You know, I, I ask you in your role here, your elected positions. To elevate the things that you think represent the values and the ideals of Concord, as we truly are and as we can be. So. If things are hard to do, if thing, it doesn't seem like an easy position to fix. To fit in, we know that there might be a year delay and that, and all, some of the comments have been very helpful and constructive. In terms of moving people towards this goal, but I hope that there is a goal that everybody can share. And that we constructively say, how can we move toward that goal instead of saying this would never work or we don't need this? So again, thank you for kind of using. Your work, your goals and your priorities to say what is important to this town. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anyone else at the microphone here in the room. If there's anyone on the Zoom that has a comment or a question, please use the raise hand feature under reactions on your Zoom. Desktop. Do not see anyone. Oh, I do see one. Okay, recognize Pamela Drift. Please give your name and address and make your comment.
It's Pamela Drift thirteen Concord Green.
I believe you're muted.
Uh, nope. Can't, can't. Um, maybe they can't hear me at the building, but they can hear me.
We have an AV problem. Just a second. Could you make just another statement or two, say testing or something like that?
Testing, Pamela Drift thirteen Concord Green. Pamela Drift thirteen Concord Green. That's me. Testing for the microphone. How to be. I'm so inspired by the, our town meeting system. I can't tell you how many.
You want to do this, so I.
Listen to cogent arguments by people who. Changed my mind.
Oh, okay, can you try again? Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Pamela Drift thirteen Concord Green. I admire, I think, all of the goals, but I think we need to focus also on. The more inclusive and the more general we can make our goals. The better we'll be able to do. Actually increase in diversity. And the more we focus on a specific problem, however. Deep we think it is, like racism. Against white and black, the more we divide ourselves from each other. Can we focus on. Increasing our kindness to each other. In general. Avoiding personal attacks, avoiding group divisiveness. And look at the things that go across the various groups, especially a focus on money. I don't. That. Actually work.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Zoom? Okay. Oh, we do have one more comment from the room. Go ahead.
Hi, Mark Martinez sixty six Opera Circle. I just have a question. Has the commissioner board. Thought about the scenario where. Complaint is filed, let's say against a town office. So the police, the fire, the DPW. And if the claim isn't satisfactorily resolved. Will the town be in the middle of a legal situation? In particular, will the town be on both sides of the legal issue? And waiving attorney-client privilege and other issues that may be involved? And will there be legal exposure? And potential costs related to what is benevolent sort of good thing to do, and that is resolve it. But now you have the town in the middle of something that we have laws for that could be adjudicated. You know, outside of the town body. Thank you.
You know, I'm not an attorney, so there's very little I can say on it. All I can say is that several of these other towns have been able to navigate the gray zone and do have. Systematic incident reporting systems that interface with the legal apparatus. So I think that's part of the work that needs to happen.
It good, but typically with these public hearing comments, one of the things is, it's something that you might want to follow up on between now and town meetings. As in order to try to clarify the situation.
And I guess I'm really sort of talking about sort of the. The hearing, the consideration aspect. And then a possible enforcement aspect. Are we talking about potentially town official issuing? Tickets. You know, and, and in the end, I think education is sort of a paramount thing to do. And it's in our schools. You read about, you know, you know, officer, you know, Chief O'Connor, who's been in the police department. And I'm just wondering, you know, it's in so many aspects of these separate town functions. Is this almost like an oddman of budsman to bring it together? And then once we have it together, I'm just fearful that. If things go awry, meaning. A victim, if you will, is not happy with the process. Is the town now responsible for a whole bunch of policies that may or may not have been adhered to? Thank you.
Mark Howel sixty eight and there's that Kilroy. This article falls into the realm of. And our citizen petition, which is. Seeking to. Guide the, the community in a certain way. And that's an important type of article, and we deal with them rather regularly. They're, they're often citizen petitions. And I think that the suggestion I would make. Is that it's very important that town meeting understand. More precisely. The extent of the action that they're actually recommending be executed by the town manager, by the select board. And. There's a lot of comments that have come forward about the practical nature of actually hiring an employee and putting them into a position. But the words say urge and expedite. And I think it. If I had the. Three to six minutes that the moderators likely to generously. Give you, I would try to clarify what urge and expedite really mean. For the fiscal year that we're talking about before we come back together at town meeting. And before we then next gather to consider whether there's going to be a budgeted position or whatever that is. I think that will make it considerably more likely that this. I think extremely important article receives the support from town meeting that I think it deserves. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I think we're ready now to move to the next article. Thanks for the Article ten presenters to Article twenty-two, which is also a citizen petition article, which is about municipal in-town solar generation task force. Mr. Banfield.
I'll wait for the commissioners. Thank you. Well, there. I'm glad to see that there are some who are remaining, so this is the, these are the true believers, so. Congress can. Open your hymnal to page twenty nineteen. And we're going to be, we're going to be on Article twenty-two. So if you want the detail, you, you can find it in here. But I'm going to try to take you through it. How do I get it forward? There we go. So I was, I was at the same position that I'm in now. Last year. So why are we back at this again? And the reason we're back at this again is because basically we're in the same place we were last year. Okay. We've, we have a goal that the Climate Action Plan has established of twenty megawatts of solar energy on town on land. By twenty thirty. And we haven't done anything since twenty seventeen, and we still haven't done anything since last year. The CMLP was urged last year to, to develop the plan to get us to twenty thirty. And there's been scant progress on that. There's a, an outline. For the plan and there's no projected time timeline on which the plan itself will be available. So. Let's just revisit a little bit. Why? Solar is important. The town answered this question last year, yes, that local solar is important. And that getting our energy as close to home as we can is a. Thing that we care about. We care about buying food from farmers who are. Growing it locally. We care about having our, our places to go walk. We don't want to have to drive to Mountain Adnok or the White Mountains. We want to have conservation land in town. We want things to be close to us. So solar energy is something that we could naturally have right around us. There's a lot of. Land in town, which is what I would just call degraded. There are parking lots, there are buildings with roofs on top of them, there are brownfield areas where. Solar would be perfectly acceptable. We all need to recognize that solar energy intrudes on the natural world. That driving by a solar panel is not like driving by a forest of trees or a farmer's field. If we're putting, if we're putting solar on arable land or we're cutting down trees, it's probably not. Part of the Concord way of thinking about it. So we need to accept our share of this burden. We need to try to find the spaces. In town where it's possible without doing those things to the natural world. We are currently buying energy. From that place on the right in Brookfield, Massachusetts. I would suspect that many trees were cut down to develop that. Utility-grade solar array. But we aren't putting any solar on the Main Street parking lot, the CCHS parking lot. And we're not putting solar. On the Public Works Building. But we are cutting down mountain tops and buying land from Spruce Mountain in Woodstock, Maine. So this is what we're doing in order to get renewable energy into our community today. And we have places in the town where I think we should be putting it and just doing it ourselves and getting it locally. When we do things like cut down the tops of that mountain, I hiked the Appalachian Trail in nineteen seventy-eight from one end to the other, and to see that today, as you're going across a nice mountain ridge and look out and you see a bunch of windmills, would not be the same experience that I experienced in nineteen seventy-eight. We need that energy. But the people in Maine. Are very reluctant to let a transmission line. Go through that state to bring hydroelectric energy from Quebec Hydro down to Boston. It is, it is held up and it may never get done. And there's tons of good hydroenergy in, in, in Quebec, but they can't get it to Boston. And that's because it intrudes on the national, natural world and what's in it for Maine, other than a big transmission line going through Maine. So we should try to do the best we can with what we've got here. Our neighbors are getting it done. They're finding a way to do it. These are pictures of, of all the school systems around us, and they all have arrays. Where is the one in Concord? There aren't any. Okay, so we're going to try again this year with a new approach to getting a plan to get us to twenty thirty, to get us to our twenty megawatts. And that's to develop a limited-duration task force to be assigned by the select board. The membership is as you see there, and to have some oversight or a liaison relationship with the Climate Action Advisory Board. Now, the Climate Action Advisory Board is merging and, you know, consolidating with the CSEC. So if there are any spare members who are without. Any portfolio, there are some new positions that may open up if this passes. There are three citizen appointees there that would be available. The CMLP director is on the list here, but the way the thing is written, the, the director of the light plant can assign a delegate. They can pick somebody from their staff to attend or to be the member if they want. The plan elements are more or less the same as what I advised last year. You got to figure out where we can put it. We have to. Work through the financials of it. There's been a lot of good work done on the CMS building. There's a, a good plan that's going to be, if anybody's looking for something else to do tomorrow night while it's snowing, you can tune into the Zoom. There, there will be a presentation on the CMS solar and battery rate. And the financials are, are being worked through on that pretty rigorously. We have to, we have to address our local grid vulnerabilities. Our electric system. Was designed to be the purchaser of electricity from the wider grid. It was not designed for us to be pumping up electricity inside the Concord fence line. So there are ways in which our local grid needs to be adapted to allow us to generate good quantities of electricity within itself, within, within the, the four corners of the Concord. Grid. The other things up there are pretty much as you see. What are the benefits? The main benefits are that we are not stressing the wider New England grid any more than we absolutely have to. Even that resource is becoming stressed. I know that it melts down in California and it, and it has serious problems in Texas. New England is very lucky. We have a very robust organization. The, the grid in New England is, is very well managed. But the more we are pulling from Maine and from Western Massachusetts and from across that, puts stress on that grid, and if we can do it locally. We reduce that stress, and that saves us money. That actually saves us money because we pay to get that stuff sent to us. So there, when we build solar here, it usually has a thirty-year arc. You know what you've got. You're going to get this much energy from it for the next thirty years. So what do we got to do? We're trying to move to fourteen percent of our total port, power portfolio in Concord by twenty thirty. That would be fantastic. We are at six percent now. We just need to keep moving up. There are lots of sites. I've mentioned several of them as I've gone through this that are available. If you were to call up today to a solar developer and say, I need solar on my roof. Um, if you were to call up today to a solar developer and say, I need solar on my roof, I would say within six months, you would have solar on your roof. In the last year, we've put up no solar. In the last six years, five years since 2017, we've put up no solar. We can get solar done. There's plenty of sites to do it on. CMS won't be ready until 2025. We're working hard on making sure it's a nicely designed system, but we should be working on other locations to put up solar sooner. So we need to get started now. And that's my talk. There are any questions?
Okay, we'll start with the select board. Any questions from the board? Um, I, I, I have a few.
Okay.
So the, the first one is um, when the 2025 rolls around and the CMS uh, capacity, we assume is built. How many megawatts? How close to our goal will we be at that point?
We need to build 12.5 more megawatts. That will add 1.3.
Only 1.3. Okay, and then um, the second point that you had made is that if you build local solar, you have a, a clear idea of how much capacity you're gonna get for a long length of time. But isn't it also true that we engage in long-term contracts for remote?
We do. The, the ones that I, the ones that I showed you there are long-term contracts. We buy in to the actual building of the one in Brookfield. I think we're, we are a, you know, a partner with four or five other towns who have literally, you know, involved in, in the creation of that through an organization called Energy New England. And that's a very long-term contract.
And then are any of the other communities that you showed that are putting the uh, solar up on the school properties and so forth, are they uh, serviced by municipal light plants?
Those are not, but there are municipal light plant solar arrays that can put up, put in in Redding, which has a, has its own municipal light plant. And in Braintree is, there are other communities. They're not literally the ones who are right, the communities that are right around us are all like ever-source communities. They're, 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 they're served by uh, investor-owned utilities, not by a municipal light.
Right, who have other set of incentives for putting.
They have, but they also have a profit motive and, and they have to pay their investors dividends. So there's, you know, there's push-pull there. Yeah.
Okay, and then I, I assume, you know, we're back here the next year uh, with uh, another article and uh, maybe the presenters of the last article, you could probably help them define what urge.
Clearly it has some power, but not a lot because last year we urged and we don't have much to show for the urging.
Yeah, and it's a different thing you're urging at this point, though.
Yes, yes. I'm urging the select board to create this task force.
And we're more pliable. But is there a, and so in, indeed, though, you, you asked for a report for a plan.
Yes.
Last year, and I think there was an outline of a plan.
There is a draft 1.0
Okay.
of an outline for a plan. And at the last select board meeting at which the light board director, light uh, light plant director attended, uh, he was specifically asked, uh, when will it be done? And he said, I don't even know when the uh, when the draft plan will be done because I haven't received any feedback and there was no clear indication of what the process was for receiving feedback. And since that meeting at the select board, it has not been modified. So we're not getting very far very fast.
Okay, um, so do we have comments? Uh, well, do we have any other comments from the board? Yes, Linda.
I was just gonna respond. I remember um, the response was sometime in March, there was gonna be a draft plan that was available.
Uh, I'm unaware of any update to the draft outline. So if that's news, uh, you've got a few weeks, three, four weeks for the whole plan to be, to be sprung upon us. But I, it, it's unlikely that we'll see that. I, i- if we will, I'll be very happy and I will not move my article.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. Um, so any comments from the public? Yes.
Thank you, Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. Dean, thank you for this. Um, you, you've asked other uh, citizen petitions, wh- where is your funding? Uh, so now I'll ask you, where is your funding for doing this? Does, and this is born of ignorance. Does the Concord Municipal Light Plant have the money uh, to facilitate this kind of set of structures around town, which would be fantastic if we had them, but how do we fund this?
Okay, so there's two, two questions in there. One is, do you have funding to support the task force? And I didn't anticipate that the task force itself would need a big budget. But if there was a possible request for a few thousand dollars of consultancy or whatever, there is some language in the article saying that the select board at its discretion could, you know, throw us a few points they found in the seat cushions. I don't know. So that's for the task force. The second question is, how are we gonna fund the actual construction of canopies behind Main Street or over on the high school parking lot? Or how are we gonna fund the solar on top of the BD Center or other places where it could go or put it, some of it on? Some of 2229 could possibly put a more utility scale set of ground-mounted solar. Costs big money to do that. Generally that is done through a debt issue. And then you get revenue from the sale of the energy that that's generating. But over the hot, long haul, it may actually be, you know, a slight cost to the town.
Oh, so in your experience, ultimately it pays for itself.
Well, that is, that is TBD, but the studies that are, that we are doing now regarding CMS uh, PV, photovoltaics are likely to cost the town a little, but it costs the ratepayer a little money. But if paired with battery storage, it is likely to be a wash or a positive. It is quite likely to be a positive if you pair photovoltaics with battery storage.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the public?
No, Kenyukela62, Prescott, it's not about article, Dean, thank you. It's about the word urge. My understanding is that uh, a citizen petition article anyway cannot direct the select board to do anything but urge them only. That's, at least that's why I use the word urge from past experience with, with other citizen petition articles.
This, this one also urges and that, that's, that's.
I just wanted to explain that maybe we don't have a choice but on the urging.
I think that's the convention. Uh, I'm not sure what the legal ramifications of demand of having the legislature demand something of the executive are in the town of Concord. So urging is.
I think you can do more than that if you have money. Yes, if you, or can you? Uh, the, the moderator is here, so I don't know if, if the Tishard Hall has to have that form. I don't think it has to.
Rob Meltzer.
Oh, just one moment. Well, here's my moderator.
Like to respond.
Yeah.
Uh, Carmen Reese, uh, 52 Devon Street, Town Moderator. So uh, town meeting does have the legal authority to form its own committees. And so it would be within the power of town meeting to form a committee and have it report back to town meeting. Um, in general, town meeting as the legislative branch does not have the authority to compel the executive branch to do anything.
That's what I thought.
So you could not direct the select board to form the committee uh, and uh, have any means of enforcing that. It would have, no matter what you said, it would have the effect on what you're urging.
Right, okay, thank you. So it is a balance of power issue.
That is my question. I'm gonna ask him that.
Okay. All right, um, I, okay, I see one more in the room before we go to the Zoom.
Yep. Uh, Mark Martinez, it's a six-hour circle. Dean, can you just, is there a sort of solar for Dunn's? And what I mean by that is we will have spent $200 million on two schools. High school and the middle school. And, and you sort of remarked that is there a reason why we don't have sort of, you know, solar funding penciled in for part of those schools? Like, well, Carlisle, Sudbury, Wallfam, you know, I've visited all those schools for, for youth sports. It surprises that we, we don't. I guess my answer, my question is, why don't?
Okay, uh, whoops. Um, we don't because we've chosen not to include solar in the capital funding for the building of these buildings. Um, we have chosen to segregate it and have it be something that becomes the responsibility of the light plant to create. Now, I'll give you an example. The town of Belmont is building a new high school. Right in the funding for the capital for the high school was included line items to put solar on the building and that was part of the actual, you know, uh, warrant article and then town vote to fund the building of the school, including solar. It's part of the plan. We decided to go a different direction. When we decided to build the middle school, our article said, build the school, make it solar-ready. And then the light plant, you come along and put the solar project, lay it in. It will be, it will be in readiness. Put it in so, uh, light plant. Now, the way that's gonna work from a funding perspective is the debt service for the school will be borne directly by the taxpayers through your property tax. But the cost of the solar arrays that will be, and the battery storage that will be put on the campus will be borne by the light plant. And it will be part of the ratepayers' bill. And whether that pushes your bill up a little bit or not is still being worked out at how much. Uh, it may be pushed up as much as $15 or $20 a year to put the solar arrays on the, on the building.
And as part of the article, is there a scenario where you could sort of lay out in very simple mathematical terms? You know, whether it's town-owned, whether it's leased, how it works.
Well, that's part of, that's part of the work of this committee. There's um.
And I guess the, the sort of the ideal scenario is that solar energy is generated, put back in the grid, you're either subsidizing or putting more energy, subsidizing from economic stance, all the energy we pay for, all the electricity we pay for.
Well, the, the thing you have to set, offset that against is how is the capital to do it funded? So you have to find a way to pay for all of that infrastructure. The panels, the battery, all of that needs to be paid for. And then the question is, you're, you're then netting that and what you're paying for debt service against how much energy is it generating? And I will tell you, in the, in the early years of something like that, it ain't generating any, any income. You are paying more to pay for the debt service on all that infrastructure than you're getting back in energy. Now, in the tail, in the long tail of it, it goes like cash flow positive. But it ain't doing it right up front.
Okay, I, I guess my only note is that if you could sort of, if some task forces, someone could just understand or lay out the economics.
Yeah.
People would love to see that.
Okay.
And further support.
Well, hopefully the task force will work through some of that.
Um, all right, I don't see any more uh, in the room. I do see one person on the Zoom. Uh, Pamela, would you uh, identify yourself and make your comment?
It's Pamela Britt, 13 Concord Green. Everything working?
It is.
Yes, it is.
I'm strongly in support of this. From everything I've found out in my research, the infrastructure investments the town will make will more than pay off financially and in resilience. We will be able to weather storms because any locally produced energy is less likely to be knocked out. And we will permanently produce green energy. And it's both better and it costs less in the long term. If you look at the life cycle of the energy process. And that is not including the benefits of not producing carbon into the atmosphere for global climate change. Th- this is one of those things where it's a no-brainer. I think the, the committee to study the broadband was very helpful. And even though the light board thought at the beginning that it may be a bad idea that they ought to have the responsibility to do it, I think that they were very glad that town meeting did establish that board and that that board was extremely helpful. And I think this will be another incidence of that. I really think that we need this information. It's, it's very important.
Thanks for your comment. Uh, any other comments on the Zoom? Okay, then I'd like to move now. Thanks, Mr. Banfield, to Article 23 uh, to adopt the Specialized Stretch Energy Code. Mr. Hubbard Nelson.
I'm Brad Hubbard Nelson, uh, 221 Machadick Road, and I'm a member of the uh, Climate Action Advisory Board. And uh, what soon to be the Climate Action Committee. And this article is in support of of the Climate Action Plan that those committees have worked to uh, to produce, which is a, a difficult plan to reduce emissions rather drastically over fairly small number of years. So um, this is about building codes and the um, last year, the Department of Energy Resources came up with a new uh, uh, revised the stretch building code. Uh, and this vote is to, as to whether the town should adopt the most stringent version of that stretch building code um, for new construction for residences and businesses and mixed use. Uh, the next slide, please. Oh, I, I can hit it here. Uh, which button? The right? Okay. Um, the uh, so we use the stretch building code in Concord as, by virtue of the fact that we're a green committee, community. And that uh, means higher, better energy efficiency for new, new uh, construction. Um, we've been using that since 2010. Last year, the DOE R revised the uh, stretch code significantly to support Massachusetts' climate goals, which are the same as Concord's. Uh, pretty much. Um, we get the updates to the stretch code automatically. We don't have to vote that. And uh, that's a big, big fraction of the changes. Um, what we're only talking about is this, the, a few opt-in provisions that is called the Specialized Stretch Code. Um, there's a typo in that sense. Uh, we, the, the, the updates to the code improve energy efficiency significantly, making use of a lot of changes in building science over the last few years, both in terms of the way buildings are constructed and also the equipment that can go in them, heat pumps and ventilation systems and stuff like that. But a big fraction of it is requiring lower HERS ratings. So when you build a house, it leaks less energy out the walls. Um, now, I can go to the, uh, okay, so the stretch code uh, allows for different cases, all-electric or mixed fuels, uh, which include balancing fossil fuels uh, which requires a higher energy efficiency, better, more insulation in the walls. Now, the opt-in fish provisions, which is what this article is about, are two, are, are just a couple of changes to it. One is that new buildings um, would need to be, if we adopt the Specialized Stretch Code, new buildings need to be wired for electrification to be electrification-ready if they use that mixed fuels option. Put fossil fuels in your building, uh, you have to wire it to be electrically heated. So you're ready to make the transition since we know by 2050 that virtually all homes would need that. Um, there's also a zero-energy option for that mixed fuels, which means you can put enough solar on PV on the roof. You'd have to have a big roof to do it, uh, but to balance all the energy use uh, of your fossil fuel system. And the third uh, is that it requires passive house design for the zero-energy option for uh, multi-family homes greater than 12,000 square feet. The building codes, there's lots and lots of details in them that'll be in a handout, but these are the three relevant differences that we would be opting into if we pass this article. So, and just as a piece of further information, we voted, we've been talking about uh, these building codes for a while, a couple of town meetings now. And last year, we voted to require new buildings to be fossil fuel-free by a home rule petition. This January, we approved to join a 10-community pilot um, which would, which would require all new buildings to be fossil fuel-free. new buildings to be fossil fuel free. So if that, if we're approved for that, and it's not really clear, what I meant is if, if that goes through, which I assume is the case, but it's not assured, two of the three bullets that differ with this, the specialized stretch code are kind of, don't amount to anything because we would be disallowing the mixed fuel option. So that's pretty much all I had to say. We, I, we want to approve the specialized stretch code in the, in the event that we're not required for the, not approved for that fossil free option by the state. I don't know what the chances are of that and to, for the additional energy efficiency on the multifamily.
Okay, thanks for your presentation. Now we'll move to questions for the board. Yes, Linda?
So you referenced there are many other details in the legislation. Does this apply to only new construction?
This is, applies to new construction, yes. I don't think it applies to. It's a good question. Does it apply to renovations over a certain size?
Sounds like something for your town meeting presentation.
Yes.
Or handout, probably more likely the handout. Other questions, yes?
Brad, can you go back to slide three for a minute? I didn't get quite a chance to read through that.
This one?
Nope, slide three. Okay, so these are three opt-in provisions. You might want to explain a little bit about each one of those at the town meeting, just one sentence each or whatever.
Okay.
And, oh, okay, well, you're gonna have a detailed thing in the handout. All right.
Right.
Okay, good. And is there any downside? What hap, what happens if we don't do this? And if we do this, is there any downside to it?
Is there any downside if we do this or if we don't do this?
Well, both.
In either. We want to lower emissions in whichever we can, way we can that is cost effective. And the, the new stretch building code, which we get for free without opting into, presumably increases the cost a little bit on, on new buildings, but not very much, a couple percent. The downside of not doing it would be a bit extra emissions in the case where we either have fossil fuel buildings that can't be easily converted to electrical, electricity, or the, in the multifamily case, a little, a little worse energy efficiency.
Okay.
So actually, I'd like to ask about the, so it sounds like the first two may be moot if we get our fossil fuel free.
Right.
Infrastructure, and it looks like we might. It looks pretty good right now that we might achieve that. So then I, makes me focus more on the third bullet. And I just am curious about the impact on buildings that are over 12,000 square feet, you know, apartment buildings in effect. And I just don't know how stringent that, like, for example, if we already had a fossil fuel free infrastructure, do, do we really want to then force those buildings to be a passive house design or zero energy? Or could we just say, well, they're gonna get clean power from the town because, and they're gonna be heated and cooled using that? So isn't that enough versus, you know, having them on site have these aspects?
This, the second part of that passive house design, the zero energy option is only if it has fossil fuels in there, or maybe that should be clarified.
Okay.
It's really saying that it should be a, should be designed with the passive house requirements, which is becoming more and more common. But I, I, I don't know, I should find out the, maybe the additional call.
What the additional requirements are and the cost, yeah, over and above, because I just, you know, we, and then are there exclusions? So for example, I know there's a proposal to build apartment buildings for affordable housing, right? And so are those, are they carved out of the code or are they part of the code? I assume they're part of the code, isn't it?
They're part of the code.
So it's.
Yeah.
So, you know, what potential impact does that have on the, the projects that are being proposed? Again, I, I'm just looking at if we already have the fossil fuel free infrastructure often available, how many more regulations do we want to put on individual buildings, construction? And especially since there's a very minor difference, it sounds like in the end, it really comes down to this one point.
Right.
That we're really passing this as opposed to anything else in the end, maybe. I mean, it's, other than that, it's sort of insurance. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And then to a lesser degree than the DEI presentation, this presentation does use a kind of small font in places. And if you can move more content to a handout or town meeting, that would probably be helpful.
I thought I used the font size that was asked for, but I will.
It's legal, it's a legal font size. Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, now, any other questions from the board before we turn to the public? Okay, from the public.
Sunnyville fifty burn up. Just, I would like to make a statement that CMLP is not providing fossil free electricity today.
No, not today, certainly not. No, but in the time.
On that page on, looking like fifteen years out, it doesn't look like it will show up in fifteen years as a hundred percent fossil fuel, fossil fuel free electricity. So in that sense, we have to have that in mind. The recs thereby are not offsets, they are just buying, paying someone else to, to have fossil free energy, but not us. We have fifty-one percent of carbon emitting sources today in our electricity. So every step we can do to reduce energy consumption and electricity is important. So even here, bullet point number three, passive house design is important to reduce electricity consumption. The only one thing I have here, a comment to this here, is I'm concerned about affordability in Concord in general. Will this drive costs up specifically again if you're making multifamily houses more expensive? Will that reduce to build out of affordable housing, the availability of new housing here in Concord?
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, any comments from Zoom? We have Pamela Dritt.
Hi, Pamela Dritt, thirteen Concord Green. I think it's a general misapprehension that these kinds of building techniques are more expensive than run-of-the-mill building. And maybe it is by a slight amount if you caught, caught, count construction costs only, but particularly, and it will not be that way for very long, because as techniques are put into practice, the cost of doing them goes down. And it's already fairly equal to regular construction techniques to use passive house type things. They're essentially only better insulation and triple painted windows. And the cost of running the buildings is so much better, especially from new construction, that particularly for affordable housing, it makes the bill, the homes much more affordable. And, and don't worry about the financial aspects of doing this. We should absolutely do this.
Thanks for your comment. I don't see any other comments on the Zoom. So now we'll move to Article thirty. Am I seeing our town manager approaching the podium?
You know, I'm not sure I even need to put the slides up. This, this will be quick. So the end result of this is, this is one of the articles that I'm going to ask that you continue to March twenty-seventh, and the reason is to give us some additional time. But the request here is that ultimately we will be asking town meeting to authorize the Select Board and Natural Resources Commission to provide a, a fee interest in a very small piece of property, 258 square feet. The issue is back in, catch up here, back in 2018, the town acquired property next to 162 Plainfield Road, which we refer to. Oh, next slide. The, the town-owned property, we refer to this as the White Pond Property. Again, that was transferred to the town in 2018. And at the time, there was a pre-existing condition, 162 Plainfield Road driveway. There's 258 square feet of that that is actually on the property that was transferred to the town. The owners of that property would like to clear the title and they'd like to be able to improve their driveway. Next slide. And the, the resolution here is because there is a transfer, a request to transfer an ownership interest, that town meeting is the only body that can authorize the Select Board and Natural Resources Commission to transfer that interest. The Natural Resources Commission is going to take this up at their meeting on March fifteenth, and that is the, that is the reason for the request to trans, to continue this to March twenty-seventh, to allow them to do their deliberations and make a recommendation. And that is the context of this article.
Any questions from the board? Well, I, I assume we're gonna charge a huge sum of money to give access to this 258 square feet.
I, that, that will be part of the discussion of the Natural Resources Commission, what, what conditions they might be looking to place on this transfer, if they will entertain it to begin with.
Right, okay. Any questions from the board on this? Any questions from the public? But you're saying that it's because the NRC has not deliberated that you want to continue the consideration of, of this article for the public hearing?
That, that is correct because there is a chance that the NRC will not want to entertain.
But in that case, wouldn't the article just simply not be moved? I mean, do we have to discuss it again on March twenty-seventh?
Well, I guess you, you don't.
No, I think we're, we, we're talking about it now. I think we, we kind of got it out there.
I thought everybody might want to know what the end result is, but I guess if you do, you have to tune into the NRC's.
The reason we had to continue Articles five and six is because we haven't seen the plan, we don't know what it is. But in this case, you kind of know what's being proposed, you just don't know if the body, that it's the authorities gonna entertain it.
That's, that's correct. There, there is a plan that is on file in the town clerk's office, it's probably available online as well.
Yeah, okay. So are there any questions from the public, either in the room or on Zoom? Okay, then I think we've dispatched this one for this, this purpose. So now we will move to Article thirty-two, the demolition review general bylaw. He's presenting on behalf of that, okay.
Hi, I'm Nancy Frisella Lee, speaking on behalf of the Historical Commission. Melissa Softfield, who is the chair, couldn't be here tonight, so I'm speaking on her behalf. This is just a very straightforward article, a little housekeeping for us. We need to change the demolition bylaw three point four, which reads that if a building is found to be historically significant and possibly preferably preserved and following public nerve notice as set forth below in section three point seven, the CHC shall hold a public meeting within sixty days, and that's the change, within sixty days rather than forty-five days of the submission date. And the simple reason for that is that the Concord, our wonderful new paper, the Concord Bridge, has an earlier deadline for submission and we wouldn't be applicant, there, there wouldn't be enough time for the commission to get back to the applicant, enough time to safely get back to the applicant within the time period. So we just need to make that numerical change.
Okay. Questions from the board? Questions from the public? Seeing none, I think we, we.
We will urge the town to adopt this, thank you.
We're going to amend, we're going to amend, we're not gonna.
We will urge the town to amend this, thank you.
All right. So let's now turn to Article thirty-six, which is a citizen petition article updating the Concord Noise Bylaw.
Yes, Sunnyville fifty burn up. Under full disclosure, I'm also serving on the Public Works Commission, but I'm here as a private citizen. Can we have the first? Here we go. So what I'm proposing is to update the Concord Construction Bylaw and change section one of the bylaw. The current bylaw consists of actually just two sections, is less than a one page long. And I just want to change section one. And for the background to this, the current noise bylaw is focused purely on construction noise. No other limitations are there on provisions for other general noise, so you could party all night long. You can do whatever you want every day, twenty-four, seven, all weekend long. Even construction noise is possible every day in the week. Only Sundays, it's a little bit shorter, but not much. So there's literally no single day in Concord where there is a quiet day. And I just moved here two and a half years ago and was a bit surprised by that. So doing my duties as a new Concord citizen, I thought I will propose a change. And the change is change the construction noise bylaw in a general noise bylaw, as typically Sunday and a few selected major holidays as quiet days in Concord, and do that similar to surrounding towns. The, actually, the rules are mirrored to Lexington, exactly the same times and days as Lexington has. The changes that are done is on section one is changing the title from a construction noise to a general noise. The noise definition stays the same in the bylaws. There's a very broad noise definition in the existing bylaw, we just leave that. The weekdays, we leave the same times, there is no change on weekdays. On weekends, we change Saturdays, make it a little bit shorter on Saturdays, starting at nine AM instead of seven AM and finishing at five PM to give perhaps a little bit time to have a nice barbecue in your backyard without noise from somewhere. And then, as mentioned, having Sunday and major holidays prohibited for noise. There are exemptions in the current bylaws in section two, we are not touching that. They are there for fire, police emergencies. But we are also adding authorization that the Select Board can issue permits or amend bylaw to deal with unforeseen consequences. I've seen it often enough that if you're changing or playing around with a bylaw, you're suddenly running into something that you haven't thought of. And in the discussions of the last two weeks I had with citizens, a few things came up. So I have pointed to this. One thing is definitely you want to allow to have our Patriot's Day events, and we know that could be a little bit noisy, specifically the cannons. So definitely this is something where either permit or exemption could be voted in that is then up, subject to what the Select Board wants to do. Another part that is right now a little bit unclear in the exemptions is the wording around municipal services, let's say CMLP or Public Works. Are they allowed to do certain work or not in off time? So there might be a certain clarification needed, a half sentence. Right now, you could say it's covered, but you could also say it's not covered. So with that, I thought it's good to have a kind of a security valve there in case. There in case there is a kind of a clarification needed. Um, that's in the end, more or less what this does. Uh, we keep it as uh, at less than a page. Other towns have like twenty-six, twenty-seven pages. We we keep it black pragmatic, as pragmatic as possible. And um. That's it. Any questions?
Okay, questions from the board, yes, Terry.
What is the enforcement mechanism?
So so far, the same as you have before, so far.
Which is what?
I not. You have no enforcement mechanism. I think there's a certain way, I think Concord trusted for decades in the current construction noise bylaw. That's enough that the important kind of police officer or whatever shows up and seriously looks in the eyes of the people and get it done. Um, but again, we have the valve that if you see that this is completely completely getting out of control and people are not.
Right.
Listening, police officer, Select Board could add some enforcement mechanism to it. But I trust that the community is behaving properly as they did in the past.
Well, um, I think there are certain situations. Where it's very difficult to enforce, like for example, um. If there's a noisy motorboat that goes down the river. Or we've been talking about Hanscom, we don't control the airplanes.
Yeah.
Um, there are noisy motorcycles, et cetera, of vehicles on Route Two. Um. So I'm not sure that this article, we'd be able to enforce any of those situations.
Um, and most of the town, other town noise bylaws don't handle uh, federal airspace, don't handle highway.
Right.
Noise, because that's not what the town regulates.
Right, or even the boats, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. That's unfortunate, but.
Well, I would love, I would love to regulate the federal airspace, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I looked into it.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the board? Um, I, you know, I, I was uh, concerned about the uh, exemption for the public works. Uh, you know, street sweeping.
Yeah.
Um, maintenance of sewers, the the like. And um. You know, it it's unfortunate that. On on the one hand, I think you're being economical and only including section one of, you know, of the bylaw to amend. But it would be, I guess, section two where you would be able to adjust the exemptions. So we have no opportunity to have meeting in the scope of the article to add that exemption. Um, we would have to do it later retrospectively as.
You could, you could always probably have an amendment, but again, the wording.
But the amendment wouldn't apply to the text of, you know, that's in the scope of the article. That's the problem.
Yeah.
We couldn't say, okay, now we'll also amend section two to do this.
But again, it's like the current bylaw is saying um, any work performed in effort to protect, provide. Or um, restore um, uh, safety or a work by public utilities. So it's 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 ambiguous, the current wording in 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 section two. You could argue it is covered and you could argue it's not covered, so. I I had a discussion on Friday, so therefore I think it's it's good we have a relief valve there, where if it's an issue. That gives you the authority to change a half sentence in section two.
Yeah, um, I I think moderator is approaching like.
Just. At the appropriate time.
Yeah, go ahead.
I I don't want to interrupt the board, but but there, I I have a comment on on this particular point. Uh, in fact, under state law, the board cannot amend a bylaw, only town meeting can do that. Uh, so we can have a bylaw that would have a provision that would allow uh, the Select Board to uh, issue. Special permits in particular circumstances, I think that would be okay, but. The Attorney General would have to review it, but we certainly. Uh, I would not expect a bylaw to pass muster with the Attorney General's office if it includes a provision that says the Select Board can amend it.
Wow, okay, well, that would mean we would need to amend this article to pass it in town meeting.
And, you know, I would, I would appreciate to get them, let's say, perhaps we can talk.
Yeah.
Um, and see what wording should be.
Um.
Well, I think, I think we just need to cross off may amend this bylaw and just keep the part about the special permit. But town council, you know, could advise us on that.
Um, Linda?
So I understand your objective is to have one day without noise. However, you and you you've selected Sunday by eliminating the construction allowance from eight AM to six PM. But for some uh, people in our town, that is their day of recreation and. Opportunity to do activities that they may or may not be able to do on Saturday, so how do you address that?
So recreation that makes noise?
Well, or, you know, other activities that may cause the noise level that you're um. Trying to implying and trying to avoid in this particular article.
Okay, um. Uh, we've got the moderator now. Again.
Just, just, just to clarify what I think I understand Ms. Escobedo's point to be. Uh, we have faced this issue with scheduling town meeting as well, which is that in certain religions, the day of rest is in Sunday. On Sunday and in others, it is on Saturday. And if your day that we're not working is the day that you mow the lawn or um, you know. Build the chicken coop, then um, that could intentionally finish.
Um, okay, uh. Any, uh, yes, town manager.
Thank you, I just wanted to make a comment about the enforcement um. Appendix A of the town bylaws is the non-criminal disposition bylaw. And it has the enforcement mechanisms, fines, uh, fine schedule and fine, fine allowed and enforcement agency for all. Municipal bylaws.
Okay, so there is an enforcement of action to be taken. Well, and then that actually brings me to another comment that I had, which was. I could totally understand if it's, you know. Midnight and I've got a party in the backyard and people are upset and the police knock on the door. Tell me to shut it down, but if it's five thirty PM on Saturday. That's a different, it feels different. Um, and uh, I just wonder. I'd love to hear more about Lexington's experience um, with these uh, regulations, because they seem awfully tight. Um, in terms of, you know, nine to five, I can understand construction noise ending construction noise at five PM, but. Um, there might be other kinds of noise and and it is certainly subjective, what is unusually loud or that's annoying. There there's certain bands from the sixties that I consider annoying, but they, you know. The, and for the nineties, so. And contemporary, so I I've just, I'm just still struggling a little bit with this. It seems very, you know, uh. It's more restrictive and and it's not just more restrictive in terms of the source of noise, but also the timeframes. At the same time, we're changing both of those things and. And again, for construction, we were going to allow construction noise all the way to eight PM up until now. But now it's any louder noise only up to five PM on a Saturday. So I again, I. I wonder about that personally, but I I'd love to get some some benchmarking if.
Yeah, you, there's um. Actually, I look at a lot of towns and the five PM is actually in the middle. Um, in the middle, in the middle, there are towns that shut it down at three or two PM.
Wow.
Yeah, just um, I give you example and don't allow until Monday morning at nine or so, or they're just, they're doing a similar approaches. Um, part of it is also landscaping noise. Um, if you have landscaping noise till eight PM. Um, that can be extremely annoying. Um, I I'm less, I'm less expecting, or I don't see that uh, Concord is the big noisy party town. Um. But in the end, um, if there's certain ground rules to think about and where you think about your neighbors when you do things. Um, you find, have to find a reasonable time. And to be honest, in my two and a half years here, um, I had plenty of Saturdays uh, evenings where. Um, I tried to enjoy and relax from a, from a tough week and there was a lot of specifically um, landscaping noise around on till eight PM.
Okay, thank you. Um, now we'll take comments from the public, I guess.
Black Horse Place, perhaps you've thought of this already, uh, maybe it's covered some elsewhere, but having grown up here on a farm family. And thinking about farm families that are in town, uh, Sunday is usually a very big day. And you've got to work uh, often well before this time and often well after this time, so just some consideration for the farmers in town. Uh, and any other of the workers in town who work uh, seven days a week, because there are plenty of them. So I know we've been talking about recreating, but also we're remembering the workers in town, specific to farmers and how this would impact them.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mary Ann Marr, forty-five Bruce Road, fifth generation in Concord, family started as farmers. Uh, when I hear the arenas working on the field on Sunday morning, it reminds me of my grandparents and it's a very happy feeling. Um, I'm a single mother, I cannot afford to live in Concord, I have to live at forty-four years old with my parents. Uh, the taxes are too insane. So after I'm done taking all of your, taking care of all of your yards, because we have a landscaping excavation business for seventy years. I have to go home and do my own yard, so that means I'm getting home pretty late. Um, the neighbors all live on a street named after my father. Um, I am going to throw my son a graduation party, uh, he'll be my second child. And I put a letter in all of my neighbor's mailboxes saying, hey. I'm throwing a party and I'm going to do my best to be as respectful as possible, but when everyone's building their houses and doing a renovation. I support that, I'm very happy for you. When my neighbor is going through a divorce and her husband wanted to mow the lawn at nine o'clock at night, we understood, there's a lot of stress over there. I welcome you to Concord, but we all were working really hard to create Concord and that happened at seven in the morning. Um, I'm not out blowing my leaf blower on your street at seven in the morning. But I can't take care of thirty yards in Concord in one day and get it ready for your party. And do special favors for everybody else and help my neighbor that's ninety-four years old with my snow blower tomorrow morning at five AM. I'm working really hard as a single parent to have a good education and to have my kids stay here. And it is not my dream to live with my parents. Everybody keeps raising the taxes, I'm working two jobs, I'm working seventy hours a week. And when people want to pass laws like this, you're just making it so much harder for me. I do not know how I can stay here and two seconds ago, everybody wanted everybody to be welcome in Concord. Well, guess what, fifth generation, I do not feel welcome, so I'm happy you moved here. I'm trying to be quiet for you, I can walk to your house. But you have to work with me because I'm trying to work, I'm not doing it to be annoying. So I can't feed my kids, I can't put my second kid in college. I don't know what you want me to do, if you want me to get a second, a new career. Sure, help me figure it out, I'd love that, so I'm happy you're here, but. Being neighborly is knowing that someone might be having a party or a barbecue and you might want to add a garage. And I know you're not doing it to be mean to me, so that's all, thanks.
My name is Richard Monahan, I live at one fifty-eight Hubbard Street. Um. This article strikes me as being, having a, being a solution that's in search of a problem. Uh, I'm at a bit of a, I moved back here in nineteen seventy-seven, so I've been back in town for forty-six years. And uh. There's the occasional disturbance of noise that seems to be handled in a reasonable way, but I I really am at a loss to understand. What the uh, what the problem is that would demand such a, relative to me, a draconian solution. Um. On mowing on Sunday, for example, if it rains on Saturday, you have to mow on, on Sunday, is that a problem with snowmower? Or somebody has a party, or somebody has a picnic in the park at Emerson on Fourth of July. Uh, how do you measure the noise of a fence? Uh, somebody in one part of town could be doing one thing that has causes no problems to do the other same kind of thing in another part of town and suddenly that's a problem. Doesn't seem to be too fair to me. I think the article is perhaps too vague, a question whether it can be reasonably enforced. And I think it's unnecessarily burdensome and I would urge the Select Board not to support it.
Right here.
In Banfield seventy-three Wall and Terrace, so one thing that I think the town needs to balance. Is the priority of the farm bylaw that we have, which protects farming activity against, you know, all, all who come after it for its aromas, for its noise, for everything. So there's farm bylaw that's already in place and if there was, this were to come into place, there would be tension. And I think farm bylaw would be preeminent in that regard, because it's trying to protect something which is a traditional way of life. And so farming should be protected if this were to happen.
Okay.
Jim Terry, three sixty-eight College Road. A number of the comments that we're going to make have already been made, so it's going to be shorter. I wonder what the problem is that needs to be solved by this law by law. I have, I've reached out to the Chief of Police and they feel that there are few noise problems. Um, they take them seriously, they investigate and they talk to the uh, party who is making the noise. And uh, in most cases, things have been settled without uh, problems at all. Um, when we talk about noise bylaws in other communities, um, Acton does not have one, Sudbury does not have one, Maynard does not have one. Bedford has a construction noise bylaw, Lexington has a noise bylaw and it's four pages long and it is specific. This is not specific. It would lead to problems that many people have mentioned before. I urge the Select Board not to support this article.
And you gave us sixty-two Prescott Road, I think, um. I understand the sentiments of the petitioner in terms of certain types of noise anyway. Um, I was just going to make small comments like um, similar to what the moderator said about Saturday versus Sunday and also special holidays. For example, people might want their own special holiday added in there too. Um. And. I just want to say that there are certain noises that do become disturbing. I just want to add this comment to the discussion, it's not about. I, the article, I think, needs some tweaking to say the least, but um, for example, if, when there is construction. Uh. Okay, so the bylaw says they can start at seven, so we get geared up, okay, they'll start at seven, but that's not what happens. Sometimes at four o'clock, some big machine comes and thump, draws something, drops something. And then, and then at six o'clock or six thirty, the trucks start coming in. I mean, this has happened to us, not recently, but a couple of years ago. Um, and the argument is made that that's, that's just people arriving, that's not the construction noise. And then, you know, people call, so anyway, there there are issues to discuss about noise. Another one is uh, when there is noisy lawnmower, lawn work. One always wonders how important really is it to maintain laws, especially now that we know about biodiversity and and uh, climate change, et cetera. So there are certain noises that need to be somehow addressed, but I agree that people should be able to celebrate and party until, you know, reasonable hours of the evening. Uh, anyway, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Mark Martino, sixty-six Alphacircle, um, just like to consider a few facts. Um, eighty-eight percent of lots in Concord are larger than a quarter acre. Now, I drove by the other day, fifty bell now. I think there were less than six trees. I think the landscapable environment. I think the landscapable environment was less than two hundred fifty square feet. One of the things that's hard for me is that whether we intend it or not, this is a very divisive issue. And you're going to pit residents against residents. So we talked, you know, we talked earlier about, or, you know, I didn't talk, but earlier as reference to enforcement. When Newton passed their summer ban, again, Newton has a summer ban, not a total ban. There were four hundred calls that emptied from eighteen households. So literally the police was literally babysitting eighteen households who continually called and called. And created havoc to that police force. By the way, Newton's seven times more dense than Concord. Brookline is thirteen times more dense than Concord. So for me, it's still about collaboration as opposed to bans. And whether you like this or not, this is a ban. And consider people who work all week, whether it's rain, snowstorm, what have you. Putting these time type of time restrictions, nine o'clock in the morning or complete ban on Sunday, just doesn't work for most people. Now, if we want to really be divisive, which we don't. What I would propose is that this bylaw and the next apply to resident city. So if you are concerned about noise and you live on top of your neighbor. And this is troubling to you. I totally no one's here saying we love noise. We love noise, you know, leaf blowers. No one does. We're talking, we're going to talk about leaf blowers in a half hour, but I would just ask you to consider whether the noise issue is a more inner around top, inner around town issue. Or whether it's really a townwide issue. And I would propose that this is really a residency issue. Thank you.
Just one comment, Lexington at twenty seven calls on their ban, some of them.
Okay, do we have any other comments either in the room or on Zoom? I am not seeing any, so I think we are now ready to move to Article thirty seven. Which is the prohibition of gas powered leaf blowers. And we it's also a citizen petition article and we have the same petitioner.
All right, again, send me a fifty burn up. Oops. So this article proposes to add a section to the noise bylaw. Gas powered handheld leaf blowers. That mirrors the provisions of Lexington. During the summer prohibition, so we have spring and fall. And then effectively twenty five prohibition for commercial landscapers. And effective twenty six prohibition for residential. Again, this is exactly the wording on Lexington. We have gas powered handheld leaf blowers produce noise up to ninety five decibels. This is a factor of one thousand more. Than the sixty five decibels typical electric leaf blowers are working with. Remember decibel, decibel, although it's only thirty decibel difference is a logarithmic scale on the base of ten. Therefore, ten to the power of three makes one thousand. With that, noise travels much easier through walls and goes much wider into the neighborhoods. The two stroke engines that are dominantly used for gas held. Leaf blowers are the most inefficient engines you can imagine. There's literally. No major innovation on this since the seventies. It only combusts seventy percent of the gas. That's why if it's operated, you smell the gas and you smell unburned stuff that sits in the air. That has besides the noise, significant impact. Also health impact, not only for the neighborhood, but also for the burgers. Bends are today established in over one hundred towns nationwide and one state. Just to be clear, it's California is prohibiting the sale of these. So you can still use it, but you can't can't buy it anymore. In effect, is the proposal is to limit the use initially to spring and fall for the gas and have leaf blowers. You can still use the electric. And then phase out the gas powered handheld leaf blowers over time. And to the earlier point is mirror what Lexington mentioned. Questions.
Okay, questions from the board? No questions from the board? So I I'll ask a question here, which is the prohibition really applies to period, two periods of the year in the the summer and the winter. In that period up until, you know, the the twenty twenty five and. So it seems strange because of course those are also the peak time of the year when those devices would be used. So they're they're allowed during the time when you're most likely to come up against them. But then let's say if if it's June first, then they're prohibited, even though. You're you're likely to only be using it if you really felt like it, you know, something unusual happened or some sort of other activity. And I I am thinking again, once again, of municipal activities of cleanups in in town centers or for things like that, that that use these devices. And they they sometimes use them off season because they're not doing the kind of traditional. Kind of blowing away of yard debris, but maybe other offensive debris. In order to assist or make it faster for them to clean up.
So so first of all, you've been surprised this, the leaf doors are used year round. Also in summer.
Oh, I've seen them used to like blow snow.
Yeah, yeah, so it's.
No, I've seen them used for things.
And then the counterargument, what you normally hear is, oh, there's only there for leaves, but they're used for everything that is little. And to be clear is if you have large acreage, everything that is gas powered and has wheels on it. Though there's this for last acreage, you have this devices where you can drive around, sit on it and blow the stuff. All of that is still allowed. These are typically less noisy four stroke engines and so on. But it's purely on gas powered handheld leaf blowers and you can use your electric one. Yeah, it's it's not that you can't clean up if you want to clean up. It's just that specific device.
And I think you cite some information about the relative power of electric leaf blowers. But I I guess there are other performance criteria, right? Wage or?
So no, the the relevant power is like cubic feet per minute, how much you put out there. You want to be at six hundred plus, six hundred fifty. The best ones go to nine hundred, nine hundred fifty. The electric ones are now at six hundred fifty to seven hundred. So you grasp you you cross that point today, not like three years ago or two thousand eighteen was the first attempt potentially. But I hear to do something in the town, these older ones didn't have to power the electric leaf doors. And remember, it's another two to three years until this kicks in.
And well, but with the the seasonal kick in would happen immediately.
Yes, yeah, but you can still use the electric.
Right, okay. And then I would have to say that of all the leaf blowers I've ever heard in my life, the very loudest was a wheeled. Device that I don't know what kind of modifications the contractor has made, but it was. As loud as a, you know, a propeller plane taking off. At at short distance. So it it this doesn't deal with that.
No, that doesn't deal with the because on the other end, you have to points earlier. If you have a larger acreage and you have more trees, you have to think about. The efficiency behind it. You can't you can't run with underpowered machines.
But then in but then the I guess the noise by law aspect of Article thirty six, if that were passed, would come into play. In a case like that, it was truly noxious. Device. On Sunday, while that that's true, it would have to be outside of the working hours.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, any other comments from the board? Okay, we'll take comments from the public.
Richard Monahan, one fifty eight Hubbard Street. This article, I believe, does not give the voters a complete picture of the gas versus electric comparison. Does not lay out the costs of conversion and treats a variety of users to a one size fits all solution. First, the basic nomenclature is wrong and incomplete. If you go into a store and ask for a handheld leaf blower, you get just that. A blower that's held in your hand. If you want a backpack leaf blow, that's something else. I think that's what your focus is on. And I would agree with Mr. Johnson, the loudest leaf blow I've heard is the walk behind. And they now have ride on ones too. So there are at least four. Varieties of leaf blowers. Apparently we're only going to ban the quietest one, which is the handheld. The power issue between gas and electric may be compatible. Clearly, there's been progress made in terms of battery power over the past several years. But the longevity of the battery is less. Consequently, you have to buy at least two batteries and batteries are expensive. And the charging time, you run out of gas, you take your gas and pour it right in the charging time. For large batteries that power good multiple leaf blowers, which are comparable to the gas, can be up at four hours. I think these facts need to be put out to people. This is we're going to pass, try to pass legislation. I think these facts ought to be made clear. A decent gas powered backpack leaf blow costs between six and seven hundred dollars. So if I bought that and this ban goes through right away. I'm out of that. And a comparable cost for a leaf blow backpack that has power and longevity that is somewhat comparable to the gas powered. Is probably going to set me back up close to nine hundred dollars. So I'm out fifteen hundred dollars right away. And I assume there's no plan for the town to compensate me for this this loss. So that's a burden that each one of us has to bear. I have no mention, there's been no mention of the cost of the town, what it's going to cost the D P W to build through and convert that. And we've had several comments about expenses going up in the town. This could be another one. Finally, I think the real issue here is noise. Business about hearing loss has been shown to be true. If you if I'm operating this thing for long periods of time and I'm not bright enough to wear some hearing protection, I may suffer ear loss. But it doesn't mean that if I'm blowing the leaves out my driveway that my neighbor is going to suffer hearing loss next door. And similarly, two stroke engines, which mix gas and oil together, are not the most efficient. They can put out a greater amount of noxious fumes. But we should remember that the engines of these things are about the size of my fist. The fuel they burn is miniscule. And I think this and the the hearing loss thing, a red herring, we should really be focusing on the news, on the noise rather. Noise too is unpleasant. I I don't particularly care for it myself, but I keep reminding myself that this is intermittent. I've had people come in and do my half acre lawn and they in and out in literally fifteen minutes. And it is not noise that goes on for eight hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty five days a year and so on. There are several groups of blower users affected by this potential law. The town, the golf courses, the commercial users and the homeowners, both as users and consumers. And I've yet to hear that there's been any preparation between these groups. Sitting down and talking to them and saying, what does this mean? I think we all realize that the era of fossil fuels is waning. And that electric power is for to cook with, to heat our homes, to blow the leaves and whatnot is the coming thing. Real question is, how do we make that transition? It strikes me that this is a thou shalt not approach. I'm going to tell you what you cannot do. And I can't help but wonder about a more collaborative approach, perhaps with incentives. If I'm want to put in a toilet, for example, the town will often give you an incentive to put in a low flow toilet. Why not the same with the leaf blow? Ease that transition from one method of power to another. Trouble with athletic fingers, you can't turn these things that fast. I'm a little confused about your your March to May and September to December limitation. Is this initially and then is a year round ban? Or is that when you proposed a ban?
Sorry, what? What is the question?
You've got a one of your slides.
Yes.
You show a ban from March to May. And September to December, I think.
No, that's that's been is allowed. March to May is allowed and September to December is allowed.
Ongoing.
No.
Let me rephrase my question. When does this March to May and September to December business start? Next year, this year?
It would start this year.
In other words, that effectively you would have a until May thirty first after town meeting. Well, I don't know, it would have to be the law by law would have to be approved by the attorney general. But at the point that the attorney general would approve the bylaw, which typically would happen in the fall. Then you would have until December thirtieth to go and then there would be a gap until March fifteenth. Where you would not be allowed to use a leaf blower, the gas powered handheld leaf blower.
But the chances are there's no restriction this year. You have to wait for.
That's right. It would not be likely a restriction this year. I mean, the attorney general suddenly. Snaps her fingers and Andrea Campbell says, yeah, I think this by law works.
Okay, my other question is, who would enforce the law and what are the penalties involved?
I believe this is in the same category. Of of bylaws as the ones we're the the noise. So it would have the same sort of enforcement provisions fines, you know, as an enforcement mechanism.
All right, okay. One of the minor point to that, when I talk to people at one of the power stores, the question of disposing of with with the embedded batteries is something to consider. That's could be an environmental issue and so on. So I I like the previous article, I find this one not that well thought out, kind of vague. And I think that a better approach to this thing would be a collaborative approach to get together with people who make their living using these things or who. Take care of the yards using these things and saying, how do we go from gas powered to electric in a way that's fair, makes economic sense and whatnot?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Just a short comment. I have regularly six to seven hours of leaf blowers in my neighborhood, not just fifteen minutes. So it's just. Yeah, but at the neighbors.
Yeah.
I have six to seven hours on weekends, nonstop. Then charging time of the strongest batteries is twenty minutes. I have them at home. I charged.
Well, I also I I just wanted to comment as well on the battery charging because I I have. A electric lawnmower, which is sort of the same class of engine. And I can say that the rapid charger, it charges in, it's a seven point five amp hour battery. So it it runs the lawnmower for an hour and the rapid charger charges it in an hour. So it it's it's basically two batteries. You you can more or less keep going. There is the change of routine, but just wanted to clarify that.
Mary Ann Marr, forty five Bruce Road, also has a family business, so really enjoying my evening. So I'm assuming you are in the landscaping business or build houses because you have a lot of expertise and statistics on this? Do you do that for a living?
I I I have a master in physics and understand.
So on paper, okay, so the statistics can be manipulated in any way. I I have an electric one. I can't even do my backyard. The quantity of batteries I would have to have to do the thirty lawns per day would be horrendous for the environment. Then I need to find a way to charge all of these every single day. Then I have to go to my customers. Then I have to go to my customers and say, well, that big investment that I've had for the last, you know, 50 years, I need to go buy new stuff that won't last. So now it's going to take me longer to do every single property. I'm not doing just people on Belknap with very tiny lots. I'm doing people on Monument Street. I'm doing work in towns that have the ban and nobody enforces it because after all the wonderful people that passed it realized their bills were going to become four times larger, nobody calls and complains anymore. I am a big recycler, like huge. I am all for the environment. The technology is not there. I know on paper it may appear it's there. But if you'd like to come and work the whole day with me and want to sweep all 30 properties every single day and get the fertilizer off that I've now accidentally put in the road as I applied it to every lawn, all the grass clippings that accidentally went into the road, all the leaves. If you're telling me my choice is the big ride on one, which I have many of, but you want to ban my backpack? I'm too tired to carry an electric one in my right hand. I don't have enough fingers to have calluses to be sweeping all day long. I need to do 30 yards a day in order to survive. And I'm not even surviving working those six days. So I, the technology's not there. I agree with you and all my landscaping friends that live in Concord and own businesses. Obviously, we would save a lot of money on fuel. The technology's not there. I'm sure we can find paper that it is there, but we actually have used the product in the field and it cannot even last three yards, probably three Belknap Street yards. That might even be a little generous, but I feel until you have the actual knowledge of working outside 12 hours a day for, well, I'm 44, I've been doing it since I was 18. It's hard to hear you want to pass something that on paper you have knowledge, but in the field have zero. So I think we need to, as a group, work harder, wait it out, wait till the technology's there, put it to the test. If you really stand behind this, what he's trying to pass, then you need to come work with me so you can see how exhausted you will be after two houses. The town gets mad if you leave grass clippings in the street. I can't have a broom. If I have to carry more batteries and I have to carry more electric ones, then I need a longer trailer, a stronger truck to pull it. I'm going to have diesel. I'm going to have more gas, more fumes. When the batteries break down, because we already know how long batteries last in the world, they're going in the landfill. If you think that all of my friends are actually going to recycle them, you're delusional. I don't want to throw batteries in there, but there are a lot of landscaping companies out there. They will not take the time to dispose of them correctly. We need the knowledge first and actually put it to the test. And I would be beyond angry if you say it's only going to affect the family businesses in Concord, but you're going to let the DPW and the golf course continue to do, use the product. So if my choice is use my ride on or an electric handheld and you're going to say, go ahead and use the ride on, then I'm going to bring my louder one every week. But you can't, that timeframe is completely unrealistic. Fertilization happens every single month. I have people that want multiple spring cleanups. I have people that want multiple fall cleanups. I have people that are paying $6,000 for a cleanup. I'm going to go to them and say $12,000? I can't even get the labor. I'm running at 50% capacity. There is nobody in the world that wants to do physical labor anymore. I cannot do this all by myself. Those things were invented to make my life easier and make everybody in Concord have all these beautiful properties that people want to live here. If you want super quiet, living on Belknap Street is not. You're right in the center of town. There's building going on. Concord Academy, they have to blow the dirt off the street. This is just the way the world is. So when the technology gets there, I think every single person would be 100% on board. It is not there. I know it. I test it. I go to the trade shows. It's not there. Thank you for your time.
So I use it. I test it. 100 other towns have a ban on it. One state has a ban on it. Technology is there.
It's not. And I can bring you people from every single one of those towns and every single person that has a family business. And I'm happy to have them tell you it's not there. Yes, there is one guy that does.
Let, I, okay, we're, we're really here.
Again, welcome.
Help clarify what the articles are in the public hearing and to get questions answered. Yes.
Hi, I'm, I, I'm trying to get with 62 Prescott Trump. I agree with the previous speaker in terms of it should apply to everyone, not just commercial. And I respect the previous speaker's personal viewpoint and experience. However, I also think in general, it's really a good idea for us not to, to start not caring so much about having pristine lawns in the first place. And, and to try to minimize as speedily as we can the, both the pollution and the noise from, from these gas equipped fueled equipment. So I just want to share that perspective. I don't know about the details of what is realistic and what is not. Obviously, there is a system in place that we'll need to change from the bottom up for, for it to be totally resolved, but.
All right, thank you. I am seeing one more speaker in the audience and with their eyes, we see one on Zoom. Go ahead.
Mark Martinez, 66 Alpha Circle. I think one of the things that irritates the situation is that in the Warren article, a number of asserted facts are just not true. So the first fact that's not true is handheld, well, electric handheld leaf blowers produce an equivalent blowing power. Not true. That it proposes, your proposal proposes to mirror existing rules of neighboring towns. Not true. So what, I'm dying to hear, I'm dying to hear from Alan Cathcart. I'm dying to hear from a DPW. I'm dying to hear from, you know, Middlesex School, Concord Academy, you know, the country clubs, Neshadex, Mesquita, the Concord Country Club. So five years ago, as you know, this was proposed to be drawn. And at the time, residents, commercial landscapers, and organizations met to try to figure it out. The overwhelming conclusion was battery powered leaf blowers were not a practical alternative. The prior director of the DPW said gas powered leaf blowers are critical to maintain the public lands efficiently. And the technology isn't there to meet demands of municipal operations. Five years ago, the petitioner carved out the DPW on the reasoning that he didn't want to pose similar financial hardships to the town's residents. So, and why did the petitioner choose gas powered leaf blowers? Because they were the easiest thing, this is a quote, the easiest thing to do without. Which was just factually not true. So let's talk about the last five years and where we've come. And hopefully, again, the DPW will talk about this and other organizations will talk about this. There are more electric powered vehicles. There are more electric powered lawnmowers. There are more sort of, you're right, technology has advanced, but it hasn't advanced at all. Well, it hasn't advanced enough to gas power, to, to make gas powered leaf blowers dispensable. So just some facts. So at comparable power measured by air velocity and air volume, a gas powered leaf blower, I'm sorry, an electric battery powered leaf blower is 94% as noisy. So you're looking at 64 decibels versus 60 decibels. The most powerful battery powered leaf blower today is 60% as powerful as the most powerful, you know, Red Max backpack blower today that's gas powered. Now, the gentleman who spoke before was a little bit off. Based on my conversation with the landscaper this morning, a gas, an electric, a battery powered leaf blower, backpack leaf blower will cost approximately $2,000 with batteries. Each battery costs $300 to $400. Now it makes sense. I don't know if you have a cordless drill. My cordless drill broke. I, they wanted literally $60 for a replacement. Small, it's a small drill. So $300 or $400 doesn't sound that outrageous when it comes to a large battery for backpack blower. So not only are they expensive, but that the runtimes at full load are not close. What I mean by that is they may last up to 45 minutes, maybe 55 minutes at low power. They will not last anywhere close to that at full power. And then the prior speaker was 100% right. The landscaper I spoke to said that he had purchased four battery powered blowers last year. And he tried to buy extra batteries. There was a one year wait. He estimates he'll need 100 batteries to have his crew do a day's work. So let's talk about residents and what we can expect their landscaping bills will go to. So a person who owns, who has a three quarter to an acre lot who pays $75 a week, their bill will go to $200 a week. A fall cleanup will go from $1,500 to $2,500 to $3,000 in the fall and spring. So people who are used to paying $3,000 to $3,500 will pay $10,000 a year in landscaping costs. Again, these are not large lots. These are not two acre lots. This is not the larger lots that we're talking. And, you know, for me, you know, we, we've made advancements, but for me, this is sort of tantamount to thinking that just because you can get or buy an electric powered car for a daily commute or to run daily local errands, does not mean we should ban SUVs or commercial trucks. You know, think about taking your Prius electric car and going skiing for the weekend with three kids and two dogs. Someday, when the customers are informed and there's customer choice, everyone will go green, including gas powered leaf blowers. Today is not even close. And hopefully Alan will speak to it. Mary Ann spoke to it. Again, my hope is, is what was announced earlier or noted earlier that just like five years ago, we can, we others can meet with you and come to a reasonable restriction.
So again, I'd like to encourage those that are in the audience or on Zoom to be asking clarifying questions, to be.
Fair enough. So just one last thing. So if this moves forward, I and others will propose amendments. And the most logical amendment is again, unfortunately, is a quarter acre residency zoning amendment. And if you choose to use, you know, live there and you choose to, you know, if you have less than a dozen trees, you don't have any appreciation for other constituencies in town. Just stop right there. Thank you.
Okay, I see one person on Zoom who has their hand up. If you could identify yourself and make your comment or have your question.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Peter Rapoio, the golf course superintendent at Concord Country Club. And I just wanted to weigh in on the proposed article with the leaf blowers. You know, certainly listen to everybody and, you know, I certainly understand the the thought process on, on electric powered vehicles and blowers. And I could tell you that, you know, the club ourselves, we've been in the process of phasing out, you know, electric carts and we're looking at technologies, leaf blowers, mowers, et cetera. You know, it's one of those things that you phase out over the next, you know, five, 10, 15 years because the technology just isn't there. You know, I know, you know, if you have any experience with dealing with large properties, we're close to 200 acres and we don't maintain 200 acres. But, you know, certainly 150 of them. And to get, you know, all that, you know, property cleared for our customers, there certainly is a, you know, a time constraint and also efficiency that needs to happen. And, you know, we've tried leaf blowers. They work in certain situations and larger situations. They don't. I could tell you that, you know, tow behind blowers and tractor blowers are, you know, work well. They are just as loud, if not louder than some of these pieces of equipment. And, you know, we're certainly trying to figure out, you know, for large areas, what would be, you know, efficient and work best for everybody. But, you know, I guess, thinking in terms of, you know, property and acreage and square footage, you know, that I think there has to be some kind of amendment to being able to do things efficiently. And when the technology catches up, I know we have 12 backpack blowers to take care of 100, you know, 50 acres. The amount of batteries and backpack blowers we would need to phase that out would be, you know, certainly cost prohibitive over time. And, you know, we're just one large business. I know there's plenty in town that would be in the same thing. I know the DPW has three times as many blowers as we do. And, you know, this is something that needs to be thought about and carefully considered. When you're looking at large, large properties and especially municipalities and other areas, I know certainly residents and landscapers are, you know, that's, that's important too, because that is their livelihood as well. And I think, you know, I'm certainly willing to sit down and compromise and be on a task force or whatever is necessary to try to help figure out a proper solution. Because, you know, green and electric is going to be the way of the future. That is certainly how things are trending and as they should. I don't think that we all have to do our part to protect the environment. You know, our club is an Autobahn certified sanctuary property. So we're, we're well versed in that. So anything we could do to help, you know, try to do that, we're certainly in favor of doing that. So we certainly like some collaboration on this and see what can work and come to a compromise that's going to benefit everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Brett Fay, if you could identify yourself and make your comment and also your home address, please.
Sure. Brett Fay, 149 Spencer Brook Road. The question I have is in relation to the proposal where it's, I think I read that something about mirroring other towns. And the question is, will we be voting on an article that says we're going to mirror other towns and not actually know what we're signing ourselves up for as a community? In other words, are other communities going to drive where our legislation is?
The article itself spells exactly out what has changed. The, the mirroring other towns is the commentary underneath it. And the times that are in there are exactly what Lexington has in there by law.
Yeah, thank you. The next person that I see, G C in Dakota.
Yes, my name is Greg Sinkata. I'm the general manager of Concord Country Club. Speaking on behalf of opposing this amendment, I think one of the things is, has been related with other people. These backpack blows for us, even though the amendment has in for seasonality use and not use, our operation is we need these on a regular basis, seven days a week, not just some days and not just in season. They're an integral part of our operation. And to ban the use of those at periods of time would not be beneficial for us as well as a lot of other people in the community that have mentioned before, especially if you're on a Saturday or a Sunday and days of the week. So while I do understand this, this part here and the noise, they do go together. And so I would wish that this would be reconsidered for a number of people, including our business as well as the residents. Thank you.
You, back to the microphone here in the room.
Thanks, Matt. Just, just a quick comment that.
This, this, just to.
Six, sure, 62 Prescott Road, nine year old. I just listening to this whole discussion and how long we are taking in order to discuss how people can better maintain their lawns and how people spend already tons of money on it and they don't want to spend a little more. And, you know, with the, with the Hanscom issue on our, you know, horizon and private jet accommodations and how outrageous that feels, et cetera. And with all the wars going on in the world. And the more important things, it seems a little embarrassing to be, to be defending our lawns so passionately. And their air, I don't know. It's, it's, I think it's better to use less gas powered equipment and less noise, less pollution and more nature connected living things.
You, and I, at this point, do not see anybody on the mics in the room or with their hand raised online. So I believe that ends this part of the thing. And, and we do though, however, have Articles Five and Six that will be continued.
Right, so we're going to continue this public hearing for Articles Five and Six only to March 27th at 7:00 PM. at seven P M. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and that ends the public hearing.